I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. There's meeting documents available for review down at the end next to Commissioner Karski. And Carol Muller is here this morning if you need a listening device. I'm going to warn everybody that I have a cold and I think I've tanked up on cold medicine, but if I start coughing uncontrollably, I'm just apologizing in advance and all the people next to me will quickly scatter to the edges, I'm guessing.
Move to the end, Dean.
With that, we'll start with routine business and I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for February 5th, 2019.
So move. Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $4,975,179.78.
Hey, the bills.
Second.
Mr. Barr.
Today's bills are a little high, but we have $1.4 million going towards capital projects and we have $3.2 million being remitted to the state from our treasurer's office. So that's boosting the number.
Takes us back down into normal range, more or less. Any other comments? If not, there's a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, there are reports there for your review. We have a Minnehaha County Highway Project Update for February. Once again, I commend that for your review. Those are great reports that the highway department puts together with where they are on their projects. Next item, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is special commission action to adjust pay rates. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. This is a request to make a small adjustment in the rates of pay for two of our variable hour staff members. They're museum aides in the museum. Quite honestly, there is a disparity in the pay for some people with comparable level experience and in comparable positions and we noticed it recently and just want to get that corrected. The reason it's a special commission action request is because it's technically half a percent higher than was allowed by salary policy on December 15th. So we're requesting your approval for that today.
Any questions for Carrie?
Move to adjust the pay rates.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Next item is a payment recommended for approval. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. And nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none this morning. And that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one scurrying for the podium, that takes us to regular business. First item is a public hearing for special event on sale liquor license for philanthropy promotions, Inc. Olivia.
Yes, this is an application for the special event on sale liquor license for philanthropy promotions, Inc. The event is Hot Harley Nights and it will take place on July 13th, 2019 at the WH Line Fairgrounds. The event will allow the general public to come in at 4:00 PM. Volunteers will be coming in at 3:00. They have not finalized their contract with the band yet, so they're not sure on an end time, but they expect it to go no later than 1:00 AM. And that is being said, one, because Commissioner Karski, thank you, brought up the question about the specific times. I had not included that in my memo. And two, because South Dakota codified law 354-123 does require that because it's on fairgrounds, it cannot, you cannot sell alcohol more than one hour before the event and you cannot sell it after the event is over.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Olivia?
Madam Chair, you know, the fairgrounds itself has a liquor license. Why aren't they using their own liquor license to profit off of this event?
That is something between the Fair Association or the Fair Board and the event holder. It is my understanding that because this is a fundraising event, proceeds are going to go to the charity, so I would...
I'd rather they went to me, or to the county, anyway.
Move approval. I'll second that.
This is a public hearing. I think first I'll see, is there anyone here that wants to speak on behalf of this item?
I'll just address your question.
Could you go ahead and introduce yourself and give us your address?
I'm Shawna Roth from J.L. Harley-Davidson. I'm also the secretary treasurer for philanthropy promotions incorporated, which is the 501(c)(3) that manages all the funds for Hot Harley Nights and other charitable events that we put on throughout the year. This is our 23rd annual event. This is our second year at the WH Lines Fairgrounds and very excited for the growth opportunity we have. And the reason that we do have the separate liquor license is because that's what we have done over the years, but it also is a major part of the fundraising that we do for Make-A-Wish South Dakota.
Any other questions?
No, I just, Madam Chair, I just think that, you know, maybe you could work a deal with the fairgrounds and use theirs and start drinking early in the day.
We like to keep it in a controlled environment as well. It is a family-friendly event.
Of course.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here who wants to speak against, who is opposed to this license? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, item 11, is a briefing on the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. Bob Munt, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, it's great to be here. Just want to take a few minutes here today to kind of give you an update on the development foundation, some of the things that we're going to be doing moving forward. Also, just to introduce myself, new here to the community. I moved here back in July, started my job there with the development foundation. I am from the area originally, though. I grew up across in Lyon County in Inwood, so I'm very familiar with Sioux Falls. My mom still lives down in Inwood and my brother is a former police officer here in Sioux Falls. So I know Sioux Falls pretty well from a historical standpoint, but I've learned an awful lot in the seven months that I've been here. So it's great to be back, it's nice to be working with all of you guys. And again, just want to kind of go through a short presentation here today. So do I get to click or do you get to click? All right, I'll let you click, how about that? So the development foundation, founded in 1954. Our primary purpose was to essentially develop land and property here in the Sioux Falls region, bring in new industry and create those jobs. Our mission, to collaboratively create economic growth and workforce development in the Sioux Falls MSA and to improve our quality of life. Whoop, there we go. We have a vision for us as well. We want to grow the tax base, we want to create and retain those quality jobs, and we also want to stimulate our workforce. That's kind of a new charge for us over the last couple, three years. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the future, but really, the purpose of this is that we really want to create Sioux Falls and the region as kind of the premier economic growth area in the country. We're funded through a number of different sources, Forward Sioux Falls. Many of you are familiar with Forward Sioux Falls, a fundraising effort put together by the Chamber and the development foundation several years ago. We receive money from the city of Sioux Falls as well. Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties both contribute to us. We have a membership and then a large portion of our funding is also generated through land sales of those parks that we own. I mentioned Forward Sioux Falls, again, a big funder for us. They, again, look at the programs that we do and allocate those funds based on a five-year scale then. Our mission is pretty simple here, our strategic circle, attraction, retention, and expansion as it relates to business and as it relates to talent and workforce. Those are the two things that we're really trying to attract, to retain, and to expand here in the Sioux Falls metropolitan area and our marketing centers around all of that. So we have some strategic priorities, as I mentioned, growing our property and our tax base and the quality jobs that we have in the region, that's number one. Talent attraction and workforce is number two, and really helping to develop our brand and our image in the region as well. Trying to make sure that Sioux Falls and the region is held up on a national scale to make sure that we have opportunities to bring in those new jobs. And then, lastly, certainly not least, just the governance and the operational excellence of our organization. Growing the property tax base, it kind of comes back to our properties that we own. Latest, one of those is Foundation Park, which is in the northwest corner of Sioux Falls. We also have two other parks that are active right now, Park Number Seven and Park Number Eight. Park Seven is actually, and also in the northwest corner of Sioux Falls, and Park Eight is actually in the northeast corner, kind of across 229 from the Sanford complex there. So we have about 225 acres in the park on the northeast corner. Foundation Park is about 820 acres. Again, that's a new park that we have and that's where companies like Windchill and Dakota Carriers and Nordica are right now. We also market available buildings, so we work with our real estate community and marketing available buildings in the region. And then we also work with developers in the region. It's our charge, really, to sell property, but it's our bigger charge to bring companies here. So if those companies want to locate on a private developer's property, we'll work with them to do that as well. So again, growing property tax base and those quality jobs are a big part of what we do. Next one, there we go. So this is Foundation Park. Some of you may be familiar with this. Again, northwest corner of the city. We have, to the left side of the screen there, that's our mega park. It's a 390-acre parcel that is accessible by rail, interstate system, as well as the airport being close by. And then the south part of the park, which is cut up into some smaller areas, and that's where Windchill is. Those lots along the orange line there are along the rail lines, so those are rail-served lots. And again, that's really a precious commodity in the economic development fields because there's not a lot of places in the country that have access to that type of rail, so it's a good asset for us. Next one. So that, that's all right. So this is our park that I mentioned up in the northeast corner. Again, that's I-229 running top to bottom there and then left to right is Interstate 90. So we're at that intersection there. We've got about 250 acres there that is for sale as well, so we market that as well. And the next one, that's Park Seven right there. That is the area up around Walmart, so it's at the intersection of Interstate 90 up there by Walmart. That is actually zoned commercial, so we're marketing that as a commercial property. So Dean Ditzick is our staff person in charge of site selection, making sure that we are marketing our property externally. He works a lot with national site selectors, he works with national brokers as well as local brokers, and then really our business community and making sure that if they need additional property to grow, that they have that property to grow. So Dean works a lot with the outside property managers as well. Mike Gray works with our existing businesses and industries. Business retention expansion is really a big part of what we do as well, working with our existing businesses and industries to make sure that they are healthy, that they're growing, and that they have the resources that they need to grow. One of the other things that we look at there is, are there any red flags? Are there any companies that may be looking at shrinking or may be looking at moving out of the area, making sure that we can work with them to keep them here? Rock Nelson is our international trade expert. Rock works with companies that are importing and exporting, works a lot with customs, making sure that those companies have what it is that they need to grow and expand and that they're constantly expanding their market, both importing and exporting. Nick Fosheim is sitting right behind me. Nick is responsible for Lakita Makita, again, working with us out in the community, touching base with all those companies, making sure, again, that the companies out within our two county region have the tools that they need to grow and expand as well. Our newest staff person, Denise Gazetta, Denise works with our talent and workforce division. As all of you know, one of our biggest challenges here is talent and workforce, bringing enough people in to fill the jobs that we have. So we're looking at a number of different programs that can help us do that. It's all driven by the strategic action workforce agenda that was put together a couple of years ago, and we're, again, putting programs in place that will really open up the pipeline for bringing people in from the outside as well as utilizing the resources that we have here locally from a people perspective to fill the jobs that we have available. So just a couple of interesting statistics about growth. You may have seen these before. Again, huge growth in the population of the Sioux Falls region going forward. Again, 60,000 people in the last eight years and about 94,000 in the MSA region here, so a lot of people moving here to Sioux Falls. We look at some of the statistics, like the employment, again, in the MSA, we've created about 25,000 jobs really in the last eight years. Our unemployment rate is 2.2%. Our labor participation rate is very high compared to the national average, as is our dual-income working families. And so when you start looking at Sioux Falls and the region around Sioux Falls, we don't have a lot of people that aren't working right now, and so we really need to take a look at how do we bring more people into this region. So that's really our focus in the area of workforce and talent. So when we talk about bringing people here, some of the things that we have to kind of overcome and some of the things that we can really promote, the positives, we have a productive labor force. Many of you have heard about the Midwestern work ethic that's still out there. We're affordable, we have a good business climate, but the not-so-good things is, you know, we're considered a remote location, we're kind of out in the prairie type of thing. So when we're marketing Sioux Falls, we have to kind of overcome some of those things. So we use a lot of things like our quality of life and the types of things that we do when we're not working, those types of quality of life issues that we talk about with transportation, the ease and access of transportation, available housing, those types of things. So those are all the things that we use to basically market our region. So again, when we're looking at talent, one of the things that we're doing is really reaching out to the colleges, universities, and tech schools within 120 miles of us to make sure that we open up that pipeline to those students that need work, that want to work, to make sure that they consider Sioux Falls and the companies of Sioux Falls. So you'll see a lot of our outreach is going to be to those universities and tech schools, again, targeting those types of jobs and targeting those students that need, that we need to fill the jobs that we have available here. And then our internal focus, also looking at what can we do to better tap into some of our resources that we have available here through Lutheran Social Services, through the cultural center, through many of the agencies right now in our community that are working to get people employed. So working with them to kind of glue those things together and provide access to our employers through those organizations as well. The immigrant population is another one. How do we tap into the immigrant population and make sure that we're training them up to the types of jobs and stuff that we have available? We do a number of programs throughout the year, shared focus-type programs, internships, apprenticeship programs. We partner with a number of organizations here in the Sioux Falls region. Last fall, we did a conference called Win in Workforce, where we bring in best practices, the companies that are really doing remarkable work within their companies to create that type of work environment where people want to come in and work, to create that culture within the company. And so really a best practice sharing through that Win in Workforce Summit. And then we're also looking at things like incentive packages. You're all familiar with incentive packages that we use to bring companies here to the region. We're looking at incentive packages really to bring people here to the region. How might we be able to work with them to accommodate them in housing, maybe some student loan assistance, maybe relocation assistance, those types of things that will provide those benefits and those incentives for people to come here to Sioux Falls. Around that, as I mentioned earlier, we have our marketing efforts. Megan Jansek does all of our marketing for the foundation, and so we'll be wrapping all of those things with a very intense marketing effort to get the word out about Sioux Falls and the region and to make sure, again, that people are aware of the jobs and the opportunities that we have here and the tremendous quality of life that we have. So we're working with, you know, our partners, the Chamber, we're working with the city to create all that package that will bring those folks here. So our marketing centers around cooperation with a number of those other organizations as well. So just to round out, this is the rest of our staff. You've seen most of our staff. So Jill is our Director of Finance and Accounting. She handles all of our, all of our figures, if you will, for Foundation Park and our day-to-day operations. We have a research and membership department run by Karen. Rulon Karen is really good at finding out information, assembling that information, and bringing up the research capabilities. And then our front door, Sharman Smith, sits at our front desk and she handles all of our incoming calls and incoming mails. So we have a staff of really 10 people right now and they're working very hard to make sure that we continue to grow this region. So that's my presentation today. I just wanted to, again, introduce myself, make sure that you're aware of some of the stuff that we have going forward, and if there's any questions, please feel free to reach out and contact me. Again, appreciate your support of the foundation, appreciate your support of the Lakita Makita operation, and we're going to continue to work hard for you.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for Bob this morning? Commissioner Bennika.
I would just say that we appreciate your efforts because without your success, our county government, that's supported primarily by property taxes, doesn't grow to meet the needs of the community. So it's a partnership that we enjoy. Frankly, we should enjoy a little more with what we have from a benefit, so thank you for all of the things that you do for us to make things a little more tolerable with meeting our needs. So we appreciate that.
Great, it's fun. We're having a good time.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barr.
I do appreciate you being here, Bob, and it's good to meet you. I do think that while we've been bringing in tens of thousands of people, too many of our jobs have been low wages and not able to support a family. I think South Dakota leads the country and, or Sioux Falls leads the country in people working three jobs. And, you know, I recognize that you want to build wealth, not just more jobs, not just more stuff, and wealth includes enriching the workers as well as the investors. But let's, let's see if we can't make sure that as we bring in more workers that they can afford to rent a house without asking the county to subsidize that rent.
Right, yeah, and we certainly realize that. And again, our, our push is for quality jobs that are paying, you know, way over that minimum wage, that are able to buy homes and invest in the community. So we'll continue that effort. And on the flip side of that, you know, we're really going to be focusing on training and upscaling people, so upscaling people. And so we're working with STI, some of our educational institutions, et cetera, to make sure that those people that may be in some of those underperforming jobs, if you will, that we continue to skill them up into those upper-level jobs.
Well, if I might continue, I know that our previous mayor had a, had a billboard program where he put pictures of himself all over saying Sioux Falls got jobs. If, if the mayor, under the city charter, would declare a $10 minimum wage, the publicity would reach worldwide. Just throw that out for you.
It's 10, why not 15?
Why not?
I don't know that our current mayor will do that. I haven't talked to him about it.
I don't think so, but I just point out that there's ways to, to spread the word that, that we could do better at.
Yeah, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna continue to promote those high-paying jobs and bring people in that can afford to live in this community and, and again, at the same time, trying to upscale those folks that are already here.
Well, thank you for coming. I know that, I've sat through your presentations before and then, and I know that part of the analysis that you guys look at when you're going after new businesses is what kind of jobs they will bring to the community and what quality, the quality of those jobs. And I was struck, as Commissioner Bennika was, as I was listening to the presentation this morning, just how many, how much overlap there is between what your organization does for Minnehaha County and, and how we can be good partners in that effort going forward. So I really appreciate you coming today and taking the time.
I have two partners sitting behind me, two that do a great job, so I want to recognize them as well. They're, they're doing outstanding work and Jesse Oliver-Hartford, just a wonderful addition to the county, so thanks for allowing him to work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, so that takes us to the next item on our agenda, and that's to authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the Joint Security Protection Agreement. Keith Winia, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Keith Winia, Division Supervisor. This amendment to the agreement changes the words from 12 officers up to 16 officers and no less than 12. So we must be doing something right over there. They want more and more of us, so. And again, to keep in mind that this agreement is 100% federally funded, so nothing comes out of the county budget by any means, so we're looking forward for the division to grow and get some more officers out there, so.
Great. Any questions for Keith?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barr.
So we're going to need to add additional officers to the Sheriff's Department?
We will. The current funding that we have for this fiscal year, this federal fiscal year, is we have enough to probably hire just one more additional person right now, but we have a new fiscal year showing up in October, so we'll probably be looking at hiring a few more, so.
A few more?
Yep. Up to 16. So this is just the first step to hire more officers, just with your guys' approval and the state's approval, to allow that, to allow us, the division to grow a little bit, so.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is item 13, to authorize the chair to sign a contract between Minnehaha County and Charles Mix County for prisoner housing. Warden Gromer, good morning.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, the warden at the jail. This is just a renewal of a housing contract that we entered into with Charles Mix County last September. That contract expired actually at the end of the year. I've just been a little slow getting the renewal to you. The only change in the contract would be an increase in the daily bed rate. I, it increased from $50 to $65 per inmate, per day. The $50 is exceptionally low, and I think the Charles Mix County is just kind of correcting their rate a little bit to match closer to what other agencies are collecting for rent payments. With this contract, we currently are not housing any inmates in Charles Mix County. I highly doubt we're going to between now and the completion of our fifth-floor addition, but I would like to have this contract in place just in the event our numbers spike a little bit and we have to move some folks somewhere else.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this contract.
Second.
Commissioner Karski.
We're not guaranteeing them any number of beds on it. It's only if we use it, that's what we pay.
Basically, what the contract is guaranteeing, that we're going to pay $65 a day if we choose to house any inmates there. There's no guaranteed number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Item 14 is a briefing on the Juvenile Detention Center prison, or pre-audit findings. Jamie Gravitt, good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. In early November, we were audited for the Prison Rape Elimination Act. That happens every three years. This is our second audit that we've completed. We exceeded in three of the standards and met the other 40 standards. We're very pleased with these findings. We exceeded in our zero-tolerance stance to sexual assault, sexual harassment within our facility. We also have a coordinator in place and then our hiring and promotion practices, as well as our upgrade to facilities and technology that we've completed over the past three years, which is mainly our camera system that we've kept up to date and added cameras in areas that had blind spots. So overall, the past three years, we had 11 reports of harassment, five of which were investigated, the other six were unfounded or didn't meet the criteria of harassment, and we've had zero reports of sexual assault within our facility in that timeframe. We're already looking at what we can do better for the next audit. We're increasing the number of investigators that we have on staff. We're also going to teach them better interview techniques than what they currently have, and then we're going to improve our record storage of incidents that happened within our facility. So I just wanted to let you know that we passed and that we're very happy with how we did on that audit.
So this is just a briefing there. Commissioner Karski, question?
Question, Jamie. First of all, very impressive, I mean, good job to exceed and to not have any shortfalls. Just curious, from three years ago, how does this compare? I could have asked earlier, but...
The first audit is more a review of your policies because there's not really much to go on at that point. This second audit looks at three years of the data, of reports that were made and how we handled those reports, if we were following the policy, if it met the criteria that, that
So, it'll be three years again. So, this is kind of our baseline now, moving forward. Okay?
Right. Well, the baseline was the first audit. This is our first time since that baseline and we've done well. I have been told through some, some of the trainings that our staff have went to, that the, the audit itself may change in the future and to be prepared for more cost. The Department of Justice is looking at a requirement to where it has to be two auditors that come no matter what. Right now, it's all based on the size of the facility, so we usually only have one auditor come. They're, they're looking at being a little more strict in compliance and enforcement. We'll still meet, no problem.
If I may, what, what did we pay for this audit?
It was right around forty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bar.
See, Jamie, I really appreciate this fine report that we had. On page five, I know it says you exceeded three standards, you met forty, and there were none that you didn't meet. I gotta say, though, that I read the first eighteen pages and then I kind of skimmed the next sixty-three pages or whatever. It's just a lot of stuff there.
It is.
And, you know, I think, in a sense, for me anyway, the summary page was, was the part I needed. It, wow, the rest were a blur.
Yeah, the, the main important thing to understand is that we're making sure that we're keeping our kids safe while they're in custody. And that's, that's one of our highest priorities and, and we take it very seriously.
Commissioner Benega.
I just have to say that I had the opportunity last week to get a tour of the facility because I'm the new liaison officer with JDC. And not only was I impressed with the report, but more importantly, I was impressed with the staff, than the longevity of a lot of those individuals who have been there. You can tell they all care about the job that they have and they also are very aware of, I would say, relationships with the, the participants, if you will, and maintaining, as Jamie's already said, a very secure location for a place that we have decreased the population and offered alternative services. If some of you remember, not that many years ago, there was a discussion about increasing the size of that facility by about two times what it currently is. And now, we don't have the need because of alternative programs. But, more importantly, the core of that group has been, I think, outstanding in maintaining changes and relationships as the population changes.
Any other questions?
I would just say Gerald's right and the, it's, I'm glad we didn't have to build another facility. That said, the current facility is looking older and, you know, it has some, reminds me of the Count of Monte Cristo a little bit. It's, has some dungeon-esque aspects that we're not using. We're, thank goodness, but Jamie, you've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. May one more comment. This report is important for our citizens to know because if you have a child or grandchild, niece, nephew, sibling, whatever, to know that if, for some reason, they have to end up in your facility, if they're charged with something, there are recent reports about housing people with mental illness problems, you, you need to know that your child is safe. And this, this is reassuring and just to, you know, pass that on, to thank you for keeping those kids safe.
Thank you.
Jamie, I had one question. You mentioned that you're, you're looking to add investigators. And I'm curious whether what you mean is you're going to train current employees so that they could also be investigators, or if you're adding staff?
Correct. No, not adding staff. This is just training current staff so that we have investigators on every shift. Most of the investigative work is going to be for our internal purposes. If there was ever an actual report of an assault, we would involve law enforcement to come in and do the actual investigation on that situation. They, they look at the process and make sure that we're doing everything correctly. On the lower level instances of harassment and, and those types of things, they'll do the, the full investigative work and come up with a response and, and what should happen because of that situation.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you for coming this morning. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm, I'm on the next one, too.
Oh, there you go. So, that's number fifteen, authorize the chair to sign the two thousand nineteen agreement between Minnehaha County and Lutheran Social Services.
Thank you. This is for the Evening Reporting Center. This is one of the, the alternative programs that we've talked about. It's designed to set, for, for kids that are having some struggles during the evening hour times. They're picked up from school, they're brought to Lutheran Social Services, they're provided some life skills training, homework help. They're provided a meal in the evening, learn how to prepare meals, clean up after meals, budget for meals, some of those life skills. And then, they're dropped off at home usually around eight, eight-thirty at night. We utilize this a lot of times in conjunction with community supervision. It, it's been highly, highly successful. They help kids find jobs. They, it gets to the point that sometimes when it's the disposition point of a child's case and they still want to continue going to the Evening Report Center. Due to that, the LSS has worked with United Way to actually develop a post-disposition program that's similar to this and continue that success that the child has seen in the community. This is the contract for two thousand nineteen. It is up by about nine percent. The sticker shock, though, should, you should understand, they took this program over from VOA a couple of years ago when VOA got out of the business. And there have been no increases in the, the thirty months that they've had it up to this point. And there were no crease, no increases for the two years prior to that. So, for about five years, we've seen no increase in the cost of this program. Any questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Jamie?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second?
So, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
That takes us to item sixteen, is to authorize the chair to sign a professional services agreement with Stockwell Engineers for the construction administration on the Highway one thirty-seven paving reconstruction project. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This agreement is for construction admin. This project is the second construction phase of the Highway one thirty-seven reconstruction project, which is just north of, of Crooks. It's a six mile long project that we graded last year and will be paving this year. Stockwell Engineers did the design on this project and the admin on the first phase. And so, this agreement is for the administration on the second phase. It's for ninety-seven thousand seventy dollars. And I'll stand by if you have any questions. Ask for your approval of the agreement.
Move approval. Second?
Commissioner Bar.
Of course, I'm going to support this, but was, why wouldn't the administration of the project be part of the original contract?
Typically, we, we don't authorize construction admin until we have a construction contract in place. And in fact, we don't have a construction contract for this one in place yet, so this is a little bit sooner than we typically do an admin agreement. But, in this case, we have to do a little bit more final design before we put the plans out for a construction bid. But typically, what we do is we, we do a final design, we open bids for the contract, a construction contract, and then we negotiate and, and determine what the construction admin agreement will look like. And, and there can be some differences during construction depending on what contractor gets the bid, how much effort they want to put towards the contract and how much time it will take to complete the project. And that's why we don't usually do the admin agreement until we have a contractor on board.
Madam Chair, so there could be additional costs on this project unforeseen at this point?
Unforeseen conditions happen on a, on a regular basis, I would say, during construction for sure. Not anticipated, but that's why we call them unforeseen.
Any other questions? Okay, if I remember correctly, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is yours as well, D.J. It's consider a motion to approve and authorize purchase agreements for three land parcels to acquire right of way.
Commissioners, in November, I think, last year, maybe the end of October of last year, we were contacted by representatives of, for Sioux Valley Energy for a permit to do some utility installations on Highway one-ten just east of Colton. And in reviewing those applications for utility improvements, we became aware that we did not have fifty foot of right of way in that section of highway. And, and so, working with their consultant, DGR Engineering, rather than have the utility company get permanent easements and, and us have to permit and work around their permanent easements in the future, we, we kind of teamed up with, with Sioux Valley Energy and DGR Engineering to draft up some H lots to obtain the full fifty foot of right of way within this, within their project limits. And so, I think there's five parcels that this impacts. We're presenting to you today three of those parcels to purchase H lots. And I think we're paying just over, around twenty-six hundred dollars per acre. And this will prevent any kind of future issues of relocation that will, that would have otherwise came up in the future if we reconstruct that road or do any improvements along that road section. So, requesting your approval today of the three purchase agreements. Once we receive that, we'll file those along with the warranty deeds and the H lots.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski.
Trying to get my head around what you said, D.J. So, we purchased the easement for the utility company?
No, in lieu of the utility company purchasing easements on private property, we purchased H lots in that same area. And then, and then the utility company then puts their utilities on the, the public right of way instead of a permanent easement. And that benefits us because then we have jurisdiction and, and governance over where they go and, and how they exist within our ditch section. And so, if they were to put it on, on a permanent easement and then ten years down the road we go to reconstruct, they have senior rights over that land. And so, then we have to pay for them to relocate. And it's very expensive to have to pay for private utility, especially an electric utility, to relocate.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bar.
And I, I know how expensive it is to relocate those things. It seems to me we had one project where they wanted thirty thousand dollars a pole to move them. But, do we know how many other highways have this, this problem where we don't have the full right of way that is required? I mean, is this just a, a thing from decades ago, a, a legacy of their laxity, or, I mean...
We do have a, a tabulation of, of which road sections have the full one-hundred foot width and which have less than that. I don't remember exactly how many parcels. We have less than one-hundred feet, but the number three million, three hundred thousand dollars worth of right of way comes to mind as, as far as the number of acres that the cost would be for purchasing those acres to obtain a full one-hundred foot swath of right of way throughout our highway system.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So, moved. Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You get to stay with us for a while, D.J., so the next item is yours as well.
Commissioners, this is a, a follow-up of an item that we had on January twenty-second. On January twenty-second, I requested approval of an agreement with Oltec Engineers to redesign, or to design a reconstruction project for about point-three miles of county Highway one-eleven. There's a hill there that's shown on the, on the screen that, that's unsafe. And what we were planning on doing at that time was just to basically cut down the hill and reconstruct that section of highway. We decided to defer it for a couple of weeks at that meeting on January twenty-second for us to allow some time to look further into some alternatives and, and having conversations with some of the commissioners and, and evaluating some other possible outcomes of this project. We are rescinding our request for approval for that design agreement. And we're going to work with the MPO and, and possibly the township at, at some other alternatives. And so, at this time, I don't know if there's any need for motion or anything, but we're, we're, we are rescinding our request for the approval of that agreement.
Since you're rescinding the request, I don't think we need to take action, but does anybody have any questions for D.J.? I appreciate you taking some of the initial feedback and I, I know you've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of commissioners since we originally heard of this. And I think it's great that you're gonna spend a little more time kind of looking at this issue to see what other options we might have. So, thank you. Okay, item nineteen, your last one.
Commissioners, this item is for a request. We are requesting authorization to declare survey equipment as surplus. In two thousand and thirteen, we hired an employee that had a, a large amount of surveying experience and, and had been trained and officially schooled on, on the use of, of GPS survey equipment. And so, we purchased at a cost of about fifty-three thousand dollars, or just under fifty-three thousand dollars, a full set of GPS surveying equipment. That employee has since moved on to a different employer and the replacement for that employee does not have formal training and, and the experience required to use this type of equipment. This equipment is pretty expensive to, to own and maintain with the licensing that's required and, and the software packages that are used. And so, without having permanent full-time staff that is trained to use it, and because of the cost of ownership, we're recommending that we surplus this while it still has some residual value. And so, we're requesting today the surplus. It's only under one asset, asset number ten-eighty-nine. It's several different pieces of equipment that are listed in the memo there. And then, also, as part of this request, requesting authorization to publish a notice to bidders for, for a sale of this and a closed bid as a method of sale.
Questions for D.J. Commissioner Benega.
I guess, D.J., the obvious question would be, is there's no plans in the near future for us to look for a quote-certified surveyor to do any of the work that you had planned on doing?
After Andrew, Andrew is the employee, the registered land surveyor that we had on staff, after he left, we did attempt to recruit for a land surveyor and, and became well aware of the, the market issues with land surveyors in this region, not just in Sioux Falls, but we contacted several other agencies and firms within the region. And, and there's not a lot of surveyors around, and so, we changed that. We reclassified our land surveyor position from a land surveyor to an engineering specialist, which is a technician that, that does have some land surveying capabilities, but certainly not typically registered and, and performing on their own, the amount of surveying that would be required to justify owning this equipment.
So, my next question would be, is we contract this out currently? What are the costs and how many times do we contract that out?
With, with every single project that we do, every construction project, we contract land surveying services and also with projects that we're looking at doing in our five-year plan. Sometimes we do surveying in order to develop some cost estimating for that. And then, our maintenance staff, they also contract some surveying services out. For example, if they're going to remove trees that are within the right of way, we need to know exactly where that right of way is. And so, we'll have a surveyor come and mark the right of way location. And so, in terms of dollars, I, I haven't tabulated that, but I would, I would say it's well over a hundred thousand dollars worth of surveying services in any given year. But at the same time, the consulting firms that are typically doing design projects for us, they strongly prefer to have the surveying completed by their own staff as opposed to a county surveyor, just because of liability and design data. And so, even if we were to have a surveyor on staff, that full dollar amount of, of services that we're paying out for right now wouldn't be recouped by performing a portion of the services in-house.
Guess my next question is, is when Andrew left, did we try to hire someone with that certification when unable to do that?
We did, yes. We, we advertised and recruited for a land surveyor and, and made multiple attempts to contact trade associations. And, and we did a pretty thorough marketing effort to try to recruit a land surveyor. And in fact, we didn't even make any offers for the, for the position, I don't believe. And in fact, we didn't even make any offers for the position, I don't believe, because of the underwhelming amount of applicants.
Supply and demand is weak.
In fact, that position, if I may, was open and attempted to be recruited to for a year and a half.
Multiple recruitments. It wasn't a year and a half, but it was, I think it was close to a year before we decided to reclassify it.
I remember I had a number of conversations with Carrie Dever. She struggled to try to, I made a mental note that we need to tell the Sioux Falls Development Foundation as they're retraining people that there's a dearth of surveyors, so maybe they could work on that. Those of us that have kids looking at future careers, maybe we need to push them in that direction, so.
It is one of the career paths that is part of the Bill Dakota Scholarship at Southeast Tech University. So there's a full scholarship available for this career path as well.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
So DJ, is the half-life of this equipment such that in five years it'd be beyond obsolescence?
It's rapidly approaching that timeframe. I don't know if that will be within one year or five years, I'm not sure. But as soon as Trimble, which is a manufacturer, releases the next generation of hardware, this would be obsolete.
Any further questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, DJ.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 20, a legislative update. Carol Muller, Craig bravely took off for peer.
Poor fellow.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, Craig Dewey went up to peer yesterday, and we've been in communication quite a bit since then. He put together a six-page summary for you about a variety of bills that are out there. There were a lot that have been dropped and some we're starting to see go to day 41 already at this particular point. But I did pick out a few that I just wanted to highlight. Senate Bill 65 is a bill that would allow counties to levy a 1% sales tax for the purpose of funding construction or renovation of courthouses and public safety facilities. That is currently awaiting a committee hearing date. We do not have a date for that scheduled yet. The Senate Bill 106 is the local option, bed, board, and booze tax. That's been assigned to Senate taxation. It was anticipated to be heard tomorrow, but it will be moved into next week, is the status of that particular bill. 185 is, Senate Bill 185 is providing provisions regarding restoration to competency for criminal defendants. We know that there's been a lot of discussion about mental health bills this year, and that happens to be one of those that we're looking at. Senate Bill 180 is one that you've had a lot of conversation about the past few years that is funding for emergency radio systems. It would fund emergency radios as part of an amendment to the General Appropriations Bill. Money is set aside and will expire, if not used, by the end of fiscal year 2024. So I know you guys have been very aware of the need for those upgrades and the conversation that goes along with those.
Carol, if I can interrupt, or I did, I guess.
Go ahead.
Do you know how much money's been set aside for that?
No, I don't. I don't. We can double-check, though.
Sorry.
Okay.
And confirm on that. Matt Thule from Metro, I know, has been very involved on a statewide basis for that. So we'll do some double-checking. House Bill 1011 is the one that you guys actually had done some work on very early, actually back in 2018. That is the bill to add JDC workers to Class B retirement and SDRS. That is passed both chambers unanimously and is awaiting the governor's signature. 1048 is another bill that is awaiting the governor's signature. And currently, you know that if you go into executive session, you have limited reasons why you should be in executive session. Things typically are done very public. This one would allow county commissions to discuss items related to security policies, building schematics, and other safety measures in executive session. And that also is awaiting the governor's signature. House Bill 1160 is a bill that has been talked about quite a bit with the counties. SDACC is supporting this legislation. This would lower the mil levy requirement that must be met to qualify for disaster funding. If enacted, the bill would lower the current 2-mil levy requirement to .5 mil for receiving state aid. The current 2-mil levy for Minnehaha County is approximately $28 million. And as you all see financials, you know that we do not have $28 million at any point during the year in our general fund. So that is a very high, high number, very high threshold. And this bill is awaiting a hearing in House Bill or in House State Affairs. House Bill 1125 is to create a property tax relief fund and to provide for the transfer of certain unobligated cash balances, including part of that would be back to the county. That was to have been heard this morning in House tax, and I have not heard what happened with that particular bill yet. So there's a lot of bills. Some we're starting to see go away. Some of the vehicle bills that are very vague are starting to either get language or starting to get dropped.
Any questions for Carol?
If I might comment?
Sorry.
You know, the legislature always finds a way to push off their responsibilities onto the county without any additional funding. And House Bill 1080, it's obviously a great idea to give a larger property tax exemption for veterans. But if the legislature thinks that's a good idea, why don't they write them a check from peer? Why do they cover themselves with glory saying, "We gave you this tax exemption," when it comes out of the pocketbook of Minnehaha County? That's my complaint. They ought to give us credit for it.
On 1080?
Oh, I think we just did.
Okay.
So I think we're probably okay unless anybody has any other questions. I know Craig has been working, you know, this time of year, people, we need to spend a lot of time trying to keep track of all of these. And we really appreciate having Craig on our staff as he has devoted much of his working days of late to keeping track of all of this and is up in peer this week on our behalf. So really appreciate you giving the update today and appreciate that.
And I will follow up on the emergency radios.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I know our next item is the courts. Is Judge Harmon on her way over?
She is, Commissioner. She's got DUI court from nine to 10, so at the stroke of 10, she'll run over.
Perfect. That's perfect. I just, I wasn't sure if you had been designated, the designated presenter today. So we will go ahead and come back to this item. And we'll go on to item 22, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Benega?
I just want to say again that I had the opportunity to go through JDC on Friday and got a thorough, not only tour, but some conversations about policies and operational issues. And I know that Carl will address one of those. But the other thing that I want to bring up in our discussions for future conversations is that I did not know until Friday that when, if there was a facility issue or a disaster, so to speak, in the community, that JDC's alternative location is the Armory. So when we talk about fairground remodeling and some other issues, that we do need to keep that in mind, if you will, because that was somewhat of an awakening for me anyhow.
I appreciate that. It's a good reminder of the complicated web we weave and that we live in. So I appreciate that. Commissioner Karski?
Not sure if this belongs in our new business or liaison reports. I'll slide it in here. It's an update on the triage project. Last Wednesday, the policy committee met and we had a teleconference with Travis Parker, who's actually out of Lincoln. He works for a company out of Pennsylvania, PRA, Public Research Associates, I believe is the name of the company. But he's going to be our contact that we are going to, entering into a contract with through the, the city is going to be, on today's city council meeting, having a first reading on it. Basically, we received enough money to hire Travis to be our consultant for the triage Local healthcare providers have generously ponied up the money to take care of this contract. And we ran it through the city's contracting office, it's just passed through, basically. But what Travis's job is going to be, the policy committee has spent close to two years working on what the triage center or project is. Travis's job is going to be telling us the who, the how, and the where. We know what we want, but you know, how do we get to this great document to making it a viable, working facility that is so desperately needed and proven, at least through the research that's been done, that we do need this facility? So the who, the hows, and the wheres are going to be answered hopefully within the next nine months so that we can have a facility up and running, at least in a test or in a pilot project mode for possibly up to two years is the initial conversation. And hopefully, long-term and ongoing, because the magical thing that makes it work is, of course, funding. So we also have to prove that funding will not be an issue going down the road and where that money comes from. So we're working on the who, the how, and the where. And we have a individual that's been identified, Travis Parker, to come in and work with us to put all these things together. He's going to spend a considerable amount of time in the community and working with us through teleconferences and so forth to make this happen.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I've got to respond to Commissioner Karski's stuff. I keep hearing, you know, rumblings of action and all this, but the gestation on this project has gone too long from my point of view. I mean, let's get this thing going here.
Amen.
More studies, more consulting, and more of that isn't my favorite.
Yeah. And to address that, Commissioner Barth, the true issue has been the ownership. We don't have, at this point, an individual or group that can authorize anything to be done, any money to be spent, any money to be gathered, appropriated, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what we're working on truly, is the ownership of this. Because until we have ownership, you know, we have a great idea, but we have to have the ownership. And that's what this is about.
Well, going back to the days when I read comic books, all I can say is "arg."
Okay. On that note, I see that we now have Judge Robin Hellman with us. Thank you so much for running over right after your court and...
Thank you. I was hoping for maybe two more minutes to catch my breath, so...
Oh, I could give you one more minute at least.
No, no, no. Bear with me while I do catch my breath. Good morning, everybody. My name's Robin Hellman. I'm the presiding judge of the Second Circuit. And we've been asked just to kind of give a status briefing and let you all know where we're at with the criminal justice system. Those of you who maybe had an opportunity back in December to attend our legislative and Commissioner Coffee, you'll probably hear some of the same things. But those of you who didn't, I'll be happy to present some of that information here today. The Second Circuit is comprised of Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. I'll try to keep most of my comments specifically for Minnehaha County. But because our circuit does involve both of the counties, what happens in Lincoln County does have a distinct impact on what we do here in Minnehaha County. You can see from the distribution of state course caseload in Circuit Fiscal Year 18 that the Second Circuit hears 33% of the cases that occurs statewide. In the Second Circuit, what that meant in Fiscal Year 18 is that we processed over 70,000 cases, which is a huge caseload for our 11 Circuit Court judges and four magistrate judges. What this means practically is that the statewide average, the average number of cases that a Circuit Court judge hears in the state of South Dakota is 3,500. In the Second Circuit, that is 4,700. So we have a much higher per capita caseload for our judges here than we do compared to other jurisdictions in the state. That's one of the reasons that currently pending before the legislature is a budget request that would grant the Second Circuit an additional Circuit Court judge. So we would have 12 Circuit Court judges and four magistrates, as opposed to the 11 Circuit Court judges that we have now. One of the big drivers of that growth in our caseload is the population growth in the Second Judicial Circuit. I don't need to tell you folks here as Minnehaha County Commissioners that our population is growing, but what we anticipate that growth to be between 2018 and 2015 is that we have 80,000 more residents that we'll be servicing here in the Second Circuit. So while not all 80,000 of those people will come and have criminal charges, a majority of them, or a large number of them, will be involved in divorces or in custody disputes. They'll have car accidents and small claims matters. They'll get traffic tickets and other things that will bring them into the scope of the Second Judicial Circuit and will further increase the number of cases that we process each year. So when we're seeing that 1,200 more cases per Circuit Court judge in Minnehaha County and in Lincoln County, that number is only going to increase, even though we anticipate that we'll get that additional Circuit Court judge. In practical terms, right now, what that means is we have over 1,300 people who walk through the courthouse doors every day. The advent a couple of years ago with people being able to pay tickets online and get information online has decreased that number, but still having 1,300 people walk through the courthouse doors each day is an extraordinary number. Our total caseload, as you could see in the numbers on that first page, has been increasing drastically since Fiscal Year 14. This slide shows that between Fiscal Year 14 and Fiscal Year 18, where we see that really dramatic increase, that is the same volume of caseload that the Sixth Judicial Circuit in South Dakota has. So what they experience in one year is the growth that we've seen over Fiscal Year 14 to Fiscal Year 18. And in practical terms, what that means in the courthouse every day is that we've got more cases, we've got more trials. In fact, we had 76 jury trials that were tried in the Second Circuit back in Fiscal Year 18, which is really a substantial number of jury trials. For each of those jury trials, we not only have those 12 jurors who come in for each case, but we have to have a greater number than 12 for the attorneys to select from. So for any given trial, we may have 40 to 800 citizens come in for jury selection if it's a murder case or a capital murder case. So we have just a very large number of people who do come through the courthouse doors for those 76 jury trials each year. We were asked to try and figure out per capita what our caseload is. I'm not sure exactly the value of the statistic, but it does certainly show that per capita, per 1,000 people, we have 287 people who are involved somehow in our justice system, whether that's in civil cases or in criminal cases. And it does include everything from traffic tickets to murder and every type of civil case that may appear in the Second Circuit. Another interesting thing is the amount of interpreter activity that we have. In that Fiscal Year 18, we had 2,584 interpreted case hearings. That averages out to about 10 cases per day, which is about one case per hour of every working day that we have some sort of interpreted case in the Minnehaha and Lincoln County courthouse. And I think this is 43 different languages that we have spoken in the courthouse throughout the course of that year. It's always been our goal to have live bodies interpreting hearings in the courthouse. But some various things that have happened over the course of the last year, year and a half, we've lost a number of interpreters and we have to rely on call-in interpreter services. And we have about three different services that we can use now to help interpret for those court hearings. A vast majority of them are Spanish, and we have a lot of good Spanish... of good Spanish local interpreters, uh, but we do have some very unique languages, I think, including one, I think it's Tigrinia, where there are only ten thousand people in the world who speak that language. So, finding somebody to interpret in a language like that, uh, can be, uh, quite difficult, but it's, it's what we do every day. Um, and I mentioned that I need to speak just a little bit about Lincoln County. Um, Lincoln County and Minnehaha County comprise the Second Circuit, and so we do have a large sharing of our judges between Minnehaha and Lincoln County. And because of the growth that we see in Lincoln County, we've had to provide more judge time in Lincoln County, which of course takes away some of the judge time that we have in Minnehaha, and that accounts for the requests that we have for the additional, uh, Circuit Court Judge. What this means is that the Lincoln County caseload has risen from the ninth largest caseload in the state to last year, it was the fourth largest caseload in the state. I believe this next fiscal year, Lincoln County will be the third largest caseload in the state. They're the third largest county now by population, and since 2010, they've had a twenty-six percent, uh, population growth. In practical terms, down in Lincoln County, that meant in 2016, they had one operational courtroom that saw hearings every day. Now, there are three courtrooms that are generally booked most days of the week. So, the growth down there has had a significant impact on our resources here in Minnehaha County. The judicial, uh, weighted workload is a study that's performed just about every year by the Unified Judicial System, and it looks at all operations of the courthouse, of the staff, and tries to gauge where we are at for our resources. And you can see by this slide, the number that's really important at the bottom is we're down about four and three-quarter judges. So, if we had a four and three-quarter more judges, we'd probably have the right number of people to do just the judicial workload that we have. And what, um, what accounts for that, uh, significant deficit that we have is the increase in filings that we've seen since, um, 2016. In 2016, the Second Judicial Circuit received an additional, uh, Circuit Court Judge from the legislature. So, I think it's really important to look at what growth we've seen since we received that last judge to show why it is that we need another one now. The felony filings in Minnehaha County from Fiscal Year 16 to Fiscal Year 18 have increased seventeen point eight percent. In Lincoln County, they've increased thirty-six point six percent. Civil filings in Minnehaha County have increased ten point four percent, and in Lincoln County, that's twenty-four point five percent. Mental illness hearings have increased seven point eight percent in Minnehaha County and thirty point eight percent in Lincoln County. And I have a couple of slides coming up that highlight these figures. Small claims in Minnehaha County have increased ten point four percent, and in Lincoln County, they've increased twelve percent. So, across the board, every type of case that we see in Minnehaha and Lincoln County has seen fairly significant increases over the last, uh, two and a half, uh, or so years. The biggest driver of that, of course, is our felony case filings. The five-year crime rate, according to FBI statistics, has increased in Sioux Falls eighty point four percent. And in 2017, the Police Department saw a record number of calls for service, a record number of narcotics investigations, a record number of methamphetamine arrests. We had a record number of homicides at ten. And one interesting statistic is that, uh, two thousand two hundred drug samples were analyzed by the Police Department in Sioux Falls in 2015. Last year, they analyzed eight hundred more drug samples than in 2015. So, the numbers that we are seeing as far as growth, um, really are staggering. And that doesn't just account for cases that we see, that the judges see, but it's something that we also see in our probation department. In Fiscal Year 18, there was, uh, fifteen percent growth in felony probationers and a twenty-five percent growth in juvenile probationers. So, the numbers across the board, um, are increasing. This shows, again, that statistic about involuntary, um, committals. And in Fiscal Year 2018, we had about one petition filed every working day. The mental illness case filings, um, are dramatically increasing in both Minnehaha and Lincoln County. And I think that the main driver of the increase that we see in those filings, of course, is the, uh, coming to Sioux Falls of Avera Behavioral Health, which occurred in, uh, Fiscal Year, uh, ten to about Fiscal Year 12, which is where we really see those spikes in our mental illness filings. And this shows then, um, of course, the First Circuit and the Second Circuit are the huge drivers for those mental ill, illness filings in the state with the services that we have in Yankton and then what we also have in Sioux Falls. Another driver of our increased, uh, not caseload necessarily, but our increased use of judicial resources in, is in the abuse and neglect proceedings. The number of case filings in abuse and neglect cases has actually decreased over the years, but that is a number that can be quite, uh, deceiving the number of filings. The, uh, A and N caseload, while they are filing fewer cases, the cases that they are filing are the cases that are of longer duration. And oftentimes, at the time that case is filed, the Department of Social Services believes that it may be moving towards a substantially involved case or a case where parental rights may be terminated. So, while the number of cases has decreased, the amount of time and resources and efforts placed into each of those cases has significantly increased. We did just a random sample of A and N cases from 2012 to 2017, just picked twenty-five cases in no particular order to see what might account for, um, the increases, uh, in the judicial resources that we are spending. And I think one of the most important figures is the number of, um, hearings that we have in those cases. In 2012, the number of hearings was eighty-one for those twenty-five cases. And in 2017, twenty-five cases had a hundred and thirty-five hearings. And also, of the number of private attorneys who are appointed, it was forty-two in 2011, uh, 2012, excuse me, and in 2017, that number was seventy-five. So, the amount of time that those cases take, not only on judicial resources, but resources of the attorneys who are involved in child protective services, um, has certainly increased. They're prosecuting the cases that really need to be prosecuted and deferring, uh, prosecution and services in other cases. So, that kind of sums up where we're at for, um, judicial resources and other resources in the courthouse and what we're looking for, um, in long-term growth. We expect that these numbers are contin, going to continue to go up and that we're going to continue to have to make requests for additional resources. Specific to Minnehaha County, though, one of the things that I want to highlight, that I believe that we really need to take a look at over the next year or two, are the facilities at the Juvenile Detention Center. As long as anybody can remember, we've had hearings at, uh, JDC throughout the course of the week. It's become clear, however, over the last couple of years, that the facilities that we have there are a dramatic concern for safety, not only for our judge, but for the clerk who staffs that, for the probation officers, and for the JDC staff. Um, the youth and their families who are presenting to JDC for those hearings are increasingly threatening to staff and to the judge and to the other people here. It's likely a result of the use of substances by, by children and by the parents, uh, but the number of assaults that have occurred on staff and on other youth in the facility has also been increasing. In 2016, youth-on-youth assaults, there were two. In 2018, that number was five. Youth-on-staff assaults in 2016 was six. In 2018, that number was twenty. And this year, we've already had two assaults on staff at JDC. And Judge Cutler is our juvenile judge right now, and I asked her to just share a couple of thoughts with me about what the security concerns were. And these are just a few instances that she's relayed from, uh, the last couple of months. There are times when she has to request that additional male staff sit in on hearings because of security, uh, concerns that she's aware of. She's had more and more issues with parents who misbehave and who threaten her. And when somebody has threatened her, there's nobody in the room there to take somebody into custody. Um, in one instance, um, after saying, uh, that a mother saying to the judge that she was going to shoot her and blow up JDC, the mother left the building, went to a convenience store, and assaulted somebody at the convenience store. Just two weeks ago, a minor was being charged with assault on law enforcement for assaulting staff. When, uh, being advised of his rights, he became agitated, swore at her, and said he was going to kill her. Um, another hearing, a father and a grandfather got so agitated when the grandfather was not allowed temporary custody, he started, uh, talking and moving about the room. The clerk who was next to the judge grabbed her computer screen because she thought she was going to have to defend herself from this father or the grandfather. And in yet another case, um, a family member was yelling and swearing so loudly and angrily at the judge when she didn't give him custody of a minor. Uh, she could hear him eventually yelling outside the hallway of the courtroom. JDC staff was asked to remove him from the building, and then he wouldn't leave the parking lot. So, we have a number of concerns about safety and security, not only at JDC, but also about the layout of the courtroom. And I don't want to talk too much about that right now, um, because we're just in some initial stages of, of looking at what might be needed. But frankly, the judge has no way to leave the courtroom if something does happen because her back is up against the wall and she'd have to go through the people who are potentially assaulting her to get out the door. And same with, uh, the clerk and with the JDC staff there. So, that's something over the next couple of months that I'm really anxious to engage in discussions with the folks, um, at the county to see if there are any modifications that we can make to make JDC, certainly the courtroom, more secure for the staff who are there. Uh, or else we might have to look at relocating those hearings to the courthouse where we can be assured that, that we have the necessary staff who can take charge if, if things do get a little bit hairy. So, with that, I'd invite any questions that you have about any of these issues?
Um, sure. And I, I know as well that Jamie is here, and I did have an opportunity to talk to, uh, Jamie yesterday a little bit, and he does have ideas about the courtroom. So, I think he's already been thinking about that, and that is certainly something we would be more than willing to dialogue about. Um, Commissioner Bennigan, I'll start with you. Has everybody looked like they had something to say? So, we'll...
Well, one of your incidences that you were talking about, I happened to be in the building last Friday when that happened. I didn't get locked down, which is probably a good thing, but more importantly, uh, we had just finished the conversation about the courtroom conversation, and, uh, this morning, I had breakfast with the Facilities Director for the county. And I will tell you that there's things in motion already to try to temporarily or permanently solve that concern, or as much as possible. So, um, I don't think there's any final solutions, but there is that discussion, and unfortunately, I, it won't happen as quickly maybe as you would like or we would like, but it will happen. I wouldn't, assuming that, uh, Commission is extremely concerned about that also.
I appreciate that. And we didn't plan that to happen while you were there.
I'm glad to hear that.
Which is, which is the, the, the security concern, that we can't ever plan for those things. And when they do happen, you just, you have what's there.
Any other comments, Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I, I won't reiterate what you so brilliantly said. Uh, I would aim a hundred percent supportive. It ought to be on our Building Committee agenda in the near future. But, Your Honor, thank you for coming, and I appreciate, uh, the fact that you, uh, and your, your fellow judges and staff work with us. But what's the status of getting an additional judge out in PEAR to come this way? How's that coming?
Well, uh, I don't want to say, uh, speak too favorably about it. Um, Judge Cutler and I have been to PEAR now on, on two occasions to speak with various legislators. Couple of weeks ago, I had the great opportunity, I will call it, to testify before the Appropriations Committee. And, um, I think we answered all of the questions that they have. The appropriators who were on the committee certainly understood the concerns that we have and the increase in caseload that we've had. So, every indication that we got when we've been in PEAR is that, uh, folks are supportive of that effort.
If I may. So, would that judge be located in Sioux Falls or Lincoln, or Minnehaha or Lincoln?
Well, I, I think we need to have a permanent judge located in Lincoln County. Um, so, we're still figuring out what, uh, the new position will be, if it will be a duty station in Lincoln County. Lincoln County has not had a permanent judge since Judge Bog retired about fifteen years ago. So, we have been rotating our judges in and out of Lincoln County every twelve to eighteen to twenty-four months. And so, I think we just really need to make a, a permanent selection for, for a person to be there on a permanent basis. But the caseload is such that, uh, we need at least another three-quarter person there, uh, to preside over cases. We've just recently, uh, revamped the magistrate schedule. So, now we have a magistrate back in Lincoln County, one day per week to handle all of the cases there. But up until just a couple of months ago, we had two full-time Circuit Court Judges, um, down in Lincoln County. So, we're just trying to juggle those resources to meet the demand that we have.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, so, I fully comprehend it, maybe as even a little bit of a civics lesson for everybody else. How is a, who or how is a judge authorized and who pays for it?
Well, the judge is authorized through a budget request from the Unified Judicial System. Each circuit goes through a budgeting, uh, process with the UJS itself. Then the UJS identifies the, the resources that are most needed, and then they present, uh, a budget to the governor. The governor takes a look at all of those departments and submitting their budgets and then, uh, develops his own budgetary, uh, package that is submitted to the legislature. This year, we have a bit of a unique situation with the change in administration in PEAR. So, Governor Gnome had the opportunity, uh, once she took office, to present then her own budget. And, um, so she's presented that budget, and that's what is working its way through the legislature now. The only difference for Minnehaha County is that now that budget proposal also includes funds for a mental health court.
Okay.
Which it didn't, um, at the beginning of the year.
So, the county doesn't pay for the judges? We just provide...
The state pays for the judges.
And we provide the facilities?
We provide the facility.
And et cetera. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much. I know a couple of us did have an opportunity to hear when you made this presentation to the legislators, and I, I learned more this time than I had not picked up the first time. So, it's very well done. There's a lot of great information. We really appreciate you taking the time to come over today.
All right. Thanks for having me. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we finished liaison reports. So, that takes us to item twenty-three, new business. Is there any new business today? If not, old business, the old business. Okay. I would then entertain a motion to recess. And then, um, we will reconvene in...
I move to recess.
So, motion, uh, can, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. We will recess. Um, we'll reconvene in, um, a little over five minutes. Five minutes, give you guys enough time to get up and stretch your legs a little bit.